A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening. Just, oh, you just have a single light there.
Yeah. We had a C and C grant for the school.
And that's on the left side.
No doubt.
Left side. I guess I would ask the board, I got an email package late this afternoon and I skimmed them real quick. I don't know whether everybody got them, got a chance to skim them.
Did you print them, did you? Yes, it is. Do you want to get them?
I do.
And then I'm gonna hand you one that came in, is this on that issue?
This handed in for that purpose, I believe so.
And we have one from the building department that evidently came in even after those letters were done, were sent to us.
I got two copies off my office.
Good.
Three, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Three twenty, what?
Three twenty.
Oh, okay. I guess the first question becomes, we scheduled this meeting but we didn't talk about the how we were going to handle the meeting, so I guess I would take suggestions from the board as to how we proceed from here.
Listen.
Well, what do you want to do with these letters that we got?
It's public documents at this point, they can be read into the agenda.
That's the question.
You could surmise them and then they're available for public.
I hate to do that, but like I said, I read them really fast at dinner with two grandchildren hanging. So there was one, two.
Should we read them?
Three.
Oh wow, yeah. What's that?
Four, looks like there are five separate letters concerning this.
Are the authors in the room here?
They're anonymous.
Anonymous.
Six.
Why do we accept anonymous letters?
Well, the question became, I was, I was called and I said the same thing you said, that these would become public documents.
Yeah.
And some people opted that they were concerned for ramifications, so they opted to put them in as anonymous.
My past experience is I don't weigh things as much if they're anonymous.
I, I don't disagree with you, but the question is are we going to consider them at all or not at all?
You know, anyone can write an anonymous letter and then, you know, whether or not, I mean, if somebody really wants to write a letter, they should put their name to it.
Well, I'm looking for.
Part of this is not, with, with an anonymous letter, you know, you know, I haven't had the chance to read them, but the, you run into where some people would just use the opportunity and throw spears instead of being problem solving.
Well, so I guess I'm looking for some guidance from the board as to what the board feels I want to do with these.
I defer to the chair myself. Yeah, I said my piece.
Nice duck and dive.
No, I said I would, if somebody wants to put a name to a letter, stand up here and say, "I wrote this letter," to me that's, that has more worth than.
Well, I'm not saying it doesn't have more worth at all. Liz, it looks like you want to say something.
I'm trying to formulate my thoughts appropriately.
If they were town hall employees that wrote the letters.
I think that given the fact that there's, we're here and we're here for a reason and people gave us this information, I think that it's our job to take those bits and pieces and try and pull it out of the people who are welcome, who came and I thank you all for coming, to try and pull out of them and let them speak as, as they feel is appropriate. And I would like to say to all of you that are here, I understand that it's hard to come to a meeting like this, but I would hope that we're going to take this meeting and not look backwards at the issue, you know, at the he said, she said, you did, I did, but instead, what do you need to do your job effectively within the town hall? What paperwork do you need to do your job and what can you do to help the person down the hall? Rather than, you know, three years ago so-and-so did this and then last year, you know, I don't want to hear that, that's not why I wanted to have the meeting. I would like to see us come together and figure out a way to work together better. Saying that, I don't think that there's a need to read these out loud, I think people know what they wrote and if they're here, hopefully that means that they're willing to stand up and say, "This is, this is what I need, this is what I need from the people down the hall, this is what I need from the board, this is what I need in general," and not point fingers.
Um, Jackie?
Well, I hate to sound like a broken record, but I've been asking to get these policies.
This would seem to be an appropriate time to address those after we hear the comments from, or from, I guess it's public.
I mean, it's like having a game with no rules. I used to be, my husband and I used to have a heating and air conditioning company and we would have to go, in fact, we did ECM savings bank, we put the heating and air conditioning there, and we would have to go to meetings every week to see what the other contractors were doing. Otherwise, you couldn't put your system in if you didn't know what the electrician was doing or the sheet rockers, everybody had to work together in order to make that renovation. And so I know there's a lot of history here and there might be some hard feelings, but I think if we had some policies to fall on, some rules, then maybe each person would feel as though they've been acknowledged and heard and we can try to help them.
Um, I was just looking at some of these letters for the first time and a lot of it is discussed that these types of type of stuff without realizing what are these jobs are. I think one of the biggest problems is people don't realize how difficult it's cost to perform, how they actually get the message out to people and how to resolve the information they're trying to simulate, to present and to have acknowledged and approved, whether it's by an auditor, whether it's by an department, whether it's moved forward an employee. A lot of this stuff, our written policies that are there, some people choose not to do them, but I think the board has to look at this and see how we need to address what we currently have and take a look at what's working and what's not working. A lot of the stuff in here is, is good information, I think a lot of the stuff is not the first time we've heard it, or the first time we've acknowledged it. I do think that, given this meeting, we're here to collect information and I think this information here should go into a packet as well as what we learned from the people here tonight to develop a spirit of cooperation and moving forward. That's my comment.
All right. Here's what I propose. First of all, just for clarity, say that all comments are being directed to the board, not to individuals in the room. If we start directing them to individuals, I'll cut the conversation off at that point in time and ask you to redirect that to the board. I think I would propose to hear from department heads first and see where any comments from them and then proceeding down from there to any employees that are in the room and then from there to the public at large as long as anybody has any objection or doesn't have any objection.
Sounds like that.
So, starting there, any department heads want to address the issue of communications and problems within the buildings?
I don't know if I want to characterize it as problems within the building, but I can certainly characterize it as communication problems. And I have a multi bulleted point agenda, mostly examples of what our communication problems are, together with copies of multiple documents that are representative of what I call the communication problem, which I will leave for the board. I raised this in your last Board of Selectmen meeting and in essence, the Board of Health has through the Town Administrator raised really just things that needed to be done, questions and concerns, and some of these items were, you know, on multiple months repetitive and non-solved. And it basically came to a head when I wrote the Board of Selectmen directly last month and said, "Listen, we have a problem," and listed what our problems were. I think that was before your last Board of Selectmen meeting. So you, you all know what those issues were, I raised them with you previously and I have examples of why I rose to the level of this frustration because it went on and on and on. I mean, I'm a, I'm the Chair of the Board of Health and this is a volunteer job, I don't need to be asking for the same thing to be done over and over and over and over again. One, it's going to fall through the cracks if I don't keep hounding and two, I shouldn't have to do that. And, and I can give examples of some of it, I don't know if the problem is that the Town Administrator position is overloaded, I don't know if the problem is that she failed to communicate it to the Board of Selectmen, candidly, I don't even care, I just want the problem fixed. I came tonight because this is representative of the problem that I'm talking about. I can share with you the stuff that I'm talking about, I'll leave this stuff with you. I have a package of emails in reference to key communication, again, simply wanted a key to emergency equipment that, some of which I paid for myself because we didn't have it and have to be reimbursed, I wanted a key to have access to it. Another one is multiple emails about food permits and problems we were having with not getting information from people that were applying to the Board of Selectmen. For instance, I'm gonna just give you an example, somebody had applied from, I believe, the winery to do an event at the Laney House, but really the, the event was here and we were sending emails to the Town Administrator saying, "By the way, the Board of Health has to do inspections and food is going to be served, can you guys let us know either formally or informally when such requests occur?" And multiple times had to raise that issue and was met with basically the response that it wasn't her job. We have website issues, again, multiple requests that the website changed, I don't know whose job it is, I requested it to the Town Administrator, I don't know if she forwarded it to you and it just didn't get done, but those are examples of that. Here's some just miscellaneous stuff, I'll leave it for you, just examples of problems that, that just can't either get things done or get whoever needs to have it done accomplish the goals. So those are our concerns. In addition to communication, I want to say that I don't have any personal agenda, I don't have any political agenda, and the reason why I'm here is because I can't understand some of the animosity that I'm feeling in this building and the divisiveness that I'm feeling and it's, it really has to stop for anybody to do their job. You're all, you're all working for free too, you know, you're working against the tide when you're working against so much animosity. So I'm here, A, to try to problem solve and B, to try to help fix it.
Thank you, Lisa. The web, first of all, just to address the issues with Town Administrator, that is a factor, there's supposed to be two jobs there and we, we are aware of it, that is two positions filled by one person right now, we are aware of it. She has on a number of occasions requested help and we've band-aided it a couple of times and we didn't anticipate that it would be this long without a Town Administrator. The website, we've talked several times about the website issue and it's a combination between John Mark, not John Martin.
John Fitzpatrick.
John Fitzpatrick, John Fitzpatrick who's a volunteer also and Reggie and I, we went so far, her and I had a conversation about letting your fellow try and do it after the last meeting, and I forget the issue that came up, codes or comments or code or something.
Actually, John Fitzpatrick had recommended that we switch to where all departments can control their own webpage, but we're not there yet.
So we're, we're trying to work end around on that, on your website issue. I know it's disheartening because we haven't been able to get it fixed.
Mike.
Right, well, just, if I can just respond to that, pushing back to us and saying that it's a problem, again, maybe we can use our man hours to help accomplish that and instead of just ignoring it.
Right.
You know, and that goes, that goes to back to communication.
Right. No, and that clearly should be addressed to you and should not be just, it doesn't get done and nothing happens, that should be rectified. But hopefully we are trying to rectify all those issues for you. The key was, that's been done though, right?
Yes, the key's done.
The key's done.
There's like a $2 fix, but I don't know why, I don't know what the problem was with it.
Sometimes it's simple takes forever.
Right, well, you know, again, and this is just my perception, in the, in the spirit of trying to resolve something, I want to say that it felt to me like a control issue, all right? And I'm just throwing that out there, it was, it felt to me like a control issue and it was nonsensical and maybe I'm wrong about that, but I want to share that with you because that's part of my frustration.
We have done, and not maybe the board, our board, not, because we were trying to limit the number of keys for everything in this building because those of you who've been around for a while, remember in the old building, we frankly didn't know who had a key to what or where, and we went so far as to try and take everybody's keys away and start from zero, and we accomplished that when we moved into this building, but, and we've had multiple requests for keys and I'm seeing, I'm sitting and watching people in this audience who are, have asked for keys and we've said no to them. So I want to be clear, communication wise, you've got a key to a closet, not to the building.
Oh, right.
Because we didn't, we still aren't giving our keys to the building. Clearly you've got a key to a closet, I don't want anybody in the room to think that they got keys to, they got keys to the building, which we won't give to anyone else.
Right.
But I want to go someplace over here.
I was just, Liz had mentioned something about the website.
I think that it seems like one of the issues regarding communication is the access to the website and updating it regularly, and I think that that's something that we need to, as a town, really look at because I understand that there's two people who try and update the website as regularly as possible and when needed, but maybe we need to come up with a, a different system because at this point, a lot of people communicate via the website and so.
We have a committee in the hall.
Maybe at some point we need to reestablish that and I know that budget season's coming up and I'm just going to throw this idea out there, perhaps we should ask each department, well, first, maybe we need to figure out if there's one person that we can give a stipend to, to maintain that website. And then each department could put into their budget a certain amount of money to share the wealth and give the stipend to that person, then the website could be updated, say, twice a month or once a month, and then if you needed something updated on the website, you would know that this person's going to take care of it at this time. And then, you know, the back and forth kind of.
Just so that we don't distract, but I'm going to start a list and I'm going to put problem, website, how to make changes to make, to keep it up to date.
It's just an idea, I'm just trying to figure out how, because this seems to be one of the major issues within, you know, everyone that I've talked to is how do we maintain the website more effectively? So, something to think about.
Yeah, I'll keep that on, I'll keep a list going for tonight and at some future meeting we'll have to discuss how we're going to rectify these.
There should be a follow-up meeting, Mike, as we look to.
Definitely.
Can I ask, can I ask a question about the, the issue with us signing a permit before you know about it? How do we need to, how do we fix that for you?
Simply, just to give us a heads up if somebody applies for a permit to this board that may, may have cross-reference with other, other boards here. For instance, the plumbing inspector, we met with him last month because he gets applications for doing plumbing things and if he sees the kitchens going in, then he gives us a heads up. I mean, we have a plan to do that, it's as simple as that. And we've devised a plan between plumbing inspector, but there should be the similar one for the Board of Selectmen.
So would it be fair that any application that comes to us should be seen by them first?
CC on it to them.
Right.
Right, there's, I'm sorry. That was our, we actually, we already talked about that and that was already brought up in the past during the select board meeting and you had all agreed that we were going to put at the bottom, please see Board of Health if you're serving food. And that was going to go on our one day alcohol permits and that, therefore, they would go to the Board of Health.
No, just for clarity's sake, we sign, we frequently sign one day liquor permits for Conant Park, that's not what you're speaking of.
That's, it is what, because if it's a vendor, it is, if a vendor is doing an event at Conant Park, let's say Twin Birch, there's likely going to be food there, if there's food there, then it needs to be inspected.
So every, so what we should do is every time we get a permit, it should CC you.
It should, we should, and then we could just toss it if we don't need to, but if it's something that raises our eyebrows and says, well, we need, they should have applied to us, then it's something we can do due diligence on. Like the event that was, the Lock Haven Winery was actually a wedding that was going to take place at the, the winery in South Hampton, they were serving a full-out meal, that needs to be inspected by the Board of Health, they can't, and those, those transient things are the things that could become health-wise dangerous. So we, we should have been alerted to that.
So in the future, all liquor and food permits that we sign should go through, go directly from us to you also.
Right, you should just let us be aware of it and if you can, tell them to come and see us.
It's on the application.
It's on.
Change the application.
Okay, so.
So when they turn in, I just want to make sure that they know to go to them, I mean, it could be on the bottom, but maybe just a gentle reminder when they turn in, don't forget.
When folks come in and drop off the checks, yes.
Okay.
So what, what, just to be clear, what we are asking for in addition to that is for you, this board, to tell us that somebody has applied for it because not everybody may show up and say, "Hey, come inspect us."
Well, I'm thinking with carbon copy of the permit, the easiest thing is when you sign the carbon copy, or a carbon copy of the permit, I'm showing my age, calling a carbon copy. A copy of the permit should go to you, just that you know we've signed the permit.
With nothing more, you don't even have anything more and you could, again.
Upon clarification, wouldn't it be better if we've seen it, you checked off yesterday and over it?
Well, it, that's a matter of, again, communication between us, who wants to go first.
Because as long as they feel it's the final straw, all right? If it was checked off ahead of time, that they saw you, you approved it, or they need the service or they don't need the service, you would have a simple check on it and then we would see that, we wouldn't be guessing, calling you in the hall, saying, "See this check."
So it needs to see you before it sees us.
I would think that'd be prudent because we're the ones that check on the, the health, you know, qualifications.
How do we get them to go to the Board of Health?
Oh, if they come to permit, they can get the information from me.
It's on the application, I just tell them to go see the Board of Health.
All right.
Right, it's simpler to look like with a, and I don't know some hits and policies well as I should, but let's assume someone applies for some kind of other license, they have to check with the, make sure there's no, a sign up from another town that there's no tax leads before they're allowed to do the next step, similar thing, that there's told that this is the first step, they're already in the building and they're already available out there.
And just to give you a history, before they, when they went to Conant Park, they, they go to the Parks Department and see what's available, they pay a permit fee, establish it, then they come here and get the one day license, a month, now they're going to come, I mean, if I'm wrong, when you get the license, you're going to approve it whether it includes or not, and then we will look at and sign it.
Right, and what, what I should do specifically with respect to Conant Park is, I don't know if there's a different inspection rule for people who are not sellers, not vendors, for instance, a private party. I've assumed that it would not be an inspection if it's a, if it's a, not a third party selling food to people.
Question though on that, how often do you, do you organize every week or every week?
Once a month, but you don't need, we have certain things that our, our health inspector does the diligence on and if it's something that happens between now and the month that we meet, he has the permission to stop or not, or not stop something.
I'm just, you know.
Yeah, so he, it's in the, in the regular course, he can review it, I mean, it's not really that the board needs to look at it, we want our, our health inspector to be looking at it.
I just didn't want to get into a situation where you meet, the next day they walk in and they need it for two weeks from now. You know, that happens in the summer a lot with graduation parties and that sort of thing.
Yeah, it should be all right unless it's a Thursday and it's Friday and he's not working, so.
All right. Any other?
Um, I think, um, points.
I mean.
I think that the town hall should have personal policy procedures for folks a little closer because there's a lot of things that aren't being done kosher or properly. And there's rules and regulations we have to follow and it's not being followed.
Such as?
Such as, well, getting paid under 18 hours for vacation and sick time, that shouldn't happen because it's supposed to be 20 hours and we have a lot of people on under 18, 18 hours.
Who's making the decision whether there are benefits or no benefits on that, or whatever?
Well, it should stop by a local clerk, she lets it go through and upstairs, the system company lets it go through. And they're both on PPP board and they should look at the book because Ruth, when she was working 18 hours, she never got vacations, sick time or anything. Jennifer in the elderly center, she works 18 hours, she doesn't get paid for vacation and it's not fair to those people at the library that don't get 18, 20 hours, they should have looked at this. And I don't know why the people on PPP board, they said it's Miss, Miss Red or something, that's their excuse. Well, it's in black and white.
Can we sign the payroll?
No.
We sign the payroll.
We sign the payroll. Um, PQV, I'm on that committee as a representative and that was a large discussion last week on that whole issue.
Why isn't it issued now, I don't know.
And there's other ones too that are not following in the year and this is why people are getting upset because they're just overlooking everything.
And I don't want to name, but is there a position that you can think of where they're getting benefits for 18 hours?
I don't know, yeah.
Well, that's, that's always a problem for morale, if everyone's not getting treated the same.
No, it's not with morale and, you know, Jennifer's right down the hall, she works 18 hours, she should have got her pay for her two weeks vacation, she didn't. I mean, you give one to, you give it to one, you've got to give it to everybody.
I think it was a prorated, I think the way the wording is in the, in the personnel.
It's not prorated, it's said 18 hours.
So I think that the solution to this is that we look at that part of it and fix it so that it's not an issue.
And I can tell you that there was a lengthy meeting last week with PQV and the issue became the, the correct book that we should be using and I.
And it's the one I have in my office.
Yes, and that was my statement, whatever, whatever volume is on record in your office is the official one, anything else is.
And I showed it to Derek and I said, "It states, black and white, anything under 20 hours, you do not get paid for sick time or vacations."
And that's always.
Twenty dollars in this building is like full-time.
Right. And that's been my impression for all the years I've sat in various board committees.
And this is why you have, you have people getting upset in this town hall because the rules change every time you turn around.
Can I be heard on this point? So, putting my hat on as a citizen, not as the Board of Chair or Chair of Board of Health, this is me as a citizen who also happens to be a employment lawyer who does more than half of her time doing employment litigation. I have two comments. One is that a person's pay, if they're promised by whoever their boss is, is a matter of, basic law in Massachusetts, so if they're promised the vacation, you can't take it away, A, okay, it's under chapter 149, it's a wage an hour. B is not everybody is the same and, you know, with all due respect, there are people here who maybe deserve vacation and bargained for it and they should get the benefit of their bargain and just let me, let me have a say, part of the divisiveness or the, the division, I think, in the town halls, people are worried about everybody else. Instead of worrying about their own job and their own pay scale, I think it is part of the problem, is people just complaining about what other people are getting. With all due respect, some other people are getting things that they bargained for and I don't even know who you're, you're commenting about, but, you know, in fairness, the PPP board sets standards, I'm assuming that whoever is the person paying, signing the paycheck is looking at those standards.
That's us.
Right.
Well, wait, wait, one second.
So thank you for letting me be heard on that point.
Okay, I mean.
But this is a municipality and PPP board is our landmark laws. You're in the corporate world, so it's kind of a little different out there. This is, they should follow by our laws, our bylaws.
If they're hired in under 18 hours, they should follow the 18, under 18 hours in the book because technically we're the employment group, not, not the individual department head who said, "I'm hiring you and you get vacation."
If they want to change it, let them change it.
Yeah.
If I can just make a responsive comment back.
What made you back to here?
Employers are municipalities and I've represented multiple municipalities for 24 years, so there really isn't a difference. I mean, yes, there's, there's policies and such, but you're still at the end of the day an employer.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, it should be that all people, all people in a municipality hired at 18 hours should be all be governed by the same thing, unless we as a board and we shouldn't be able to, I don't even think we can, but if we waived something or did something different, I don't.
I don't remember that.
Huh?
I don't remember that.
No, I mean, it should be, the book is the Bible. Every, every employee hired in this town that's not a union employee.
And they all got a copy.
Yeah, that was the other controversy that we had the other night is who got what, what copy they got.
It's always been all the financial times we've had, that we really didn't look at that 20-hour mark because we didn't want to pay benefits.
We kept them under 20.
So we didn't have the money, we didn't want to let somebody off, we wanted to just make people employed, but some people just didn't get benefits.
I will, I will, do you have anything further on that issue? So the question becomes, the problem is we have a disparity, if I may summarize, a disparity between employees of under 18 hours, is that correct? And the question becomes, how do we rectify that?
We sign the paychecks. You have to define the policy.
Right, we need to define the policy and then we need to fix that.
I think that it was clear under, one, one of the books that was out being, that had been distributed, and I'm not sure, because I haven't looked at it recently, said, it was clear about the house insurance, but it wasn't clear on sick or vacation time.
Okay, so we need to.
But it was really, yeah, there were two different versions out, so I have a non-magical, I just think maybe it needs to be.
I just think maybe it needs to be clarified.
The only, the only version is, if I remember correctly, after last week's lengthy meeting, in the ninety-seven version, and the book was re-typed, reformatted according to the cover, in two thousand and seven, but there was supposed to be no changes, because it was never voted on, and even if, even if there were changes, they're not effective, because it was never voted on. So the only version that's really the governing version is ninety-seven. Whatever it says in the ninety-seven book, this should be it.
And it's only one?
So what we, I, I guess the board is gonna have to look into the disparity.
I just don't understand why it's an issue now, after ten years of being on the board. I mean, it's, it's been what it is. So why is it an issue now?
Well, it's becoming, we've been, it's called to our attention that it is an issue, the question is, do we find it's an issue, and how are we gonna fix it?
I never remember an, an employee getting, working ten, eighteen hours a, a week, or eighteen hours, whatever, getting vacation time.
All right, and that's, that's.
That's the issue.
They never got vacation time, and ten years without.
But we're being told, we're being told that someone is.
Okay, so.
But that's inappropriate, that's wrong.
Right.
So the question is, how do we get everybody back to the same level?
So we look at the policy, we do what we need to do, whether it has to go to a vote or whatever, to change the verbiage, so that it's clear, and then we go forward.
And the change of the verbiage, because of the lengthy meeting last week, is, as I recall, the PQB presents to us, has a, draws language, has a hearing, presents to this board their recommendation, and it's our vote to change, whether we change it or not.
We couldn't afford to do that. We couldn't afford to give the part-time employees vacation or benefits.
I'm not saying we couldn't, but I'm saying that's how the verbiage gets changed. If I remember correctly from the book, because we had a lengthy discussion last week as to how we would fix it, if we had to, they make a rec, anybody can make a recommendation, but basically the PQB makes, has a hearing, makes a recommendation to us, and we vote the recommendation, or not vote the recommendation.
Was there a timeframe that they were gonna come to talk to us about that?
We, I, I have to report back to them, because I've been chasing around town hall for the, to find out the history of the, the different dated books, and through Reggie and Eileen, I've learned that this reformatted, that's on the cover, what was causing problems, was simply a retyping, it was, so any changes that were done, if there were any changes, and there weren't supposed to be any changes, any changes that did occur were not legally minded, because it didn't go through that process. So now I'm gonna report back to them next month. The only book that's in play is ninety-seven, the copy that Eileen has on file, and that's the only one they can go by. That's the only one any town board can go by, because that's the one.
Can I just ask a clar, a point of clarification? So there's, there's a valid policy that's in effect since ninety-seven, and it says that people who are less than eighteen hours, or eighteen or less, cannot have vacation? It clearly says that in there?
I don't wanna say that, I know.
I'm gonna go get the book.
I just wanna understand.
I would like to see, I would like to see.
All right, well, while Eileen gets the book, I don't wanna hold it, let's move on. Anyone come back, is our agreement, anybody come back to the issue again? Maybe we can do something tonight. Anyone else wanna speak to this? Any, does anyone wanna speak to any issue about communications within town hall? Eileen, you gonna get the book?
Pardon?
Are we gonna get the book?
Oh, I thought you.
No, I'll tell, we're waiting for you, Eileen, we'll, we'll take it up. Does anybody have any questions about anything? Yeah, anybody else open to the public, anybody? I don't.
I guess, um, for me, it's very important that certain financial information that my office gets, and there were some things that slipped through the cracks, that we didn't get, nor did not yet, um, and so now, it happens that that money has to get taken out of free cash, instead of borrowing for it, so.
Oh, say that again, what amount of money are you talking about?
Ninety-two thousand dollars.
What, what, what ninety?
Basically, um, the North School roof, there were invoices, whether they were presented to you, and you guys didn't sign off on them or whatnot, were not given to us until July of two thousand and thirteen. So I had to encumber them for two thousand and thirteen. Um, I didn't know about them, we asked numerous occasions, is there anything that we need to know about as far as invoices? I called one of the companies, they never called me back, to know what we need to pay in order, whether they were approved or not, we needed to know how much that was, so we could do a short, not do a short-term borrowing. I could account to them in our books, before, um, we actually closed. So, um, I guess that type of information, I kinda need to know. So, um, it, it's not gonna be a total detriment, for FY thirteen, it's gonna help to come right off the top of free cash, but in FY fourteen, once we borrow it and we get reimbursed from MSBA, it will get put back in to that free cash number one I calculated, but for FY thirteen, I have to deduct it right away, because it's a negative number, so you don't have, we didn't have the money to cover.
How much is left of free cash?
There's nothing left in free cash right now, until I recalculate it, until I get it re-approved.
I'm not gonna bend this, I'm on that committee, I can't, I'll stick, how do you?
No, no, we formed that, it was me, me and myself, guy.
And that's when those bills came up.
We bought, we sent bills from the engine firms, and, um, if you want back, it's similar, January, and that's true, so.
It's.
But I think eventually, it is a project, a funded project, that should be bonded, and it's not like the money is not gonna go back.
No, it's not, I'm just saying that, we could've avoided that situation.
We're, we're gonna make a circle with the money, but we could've avoided the circle.
Correct.
Frankly, it is a circle, and the money's gonna come back.
It's a percentage of the borrowing.
Well, you're.
That money will be frozen, when free cash is declared, no one resolves. But it does cost a dollar more, in a different fiscal year, right?
Yeah, and I had, you know, and there was some, um, thought that maybe we could pay for that in FY fourteen, but clearly it's FY thirteen, we gotta keep, we gotta match it up. I called the DOR, talked to Joe Rudro, and that's what we had to do, was encumber the money, we actually handled bills from December, and April, May, and June.
Look, I mean, I just wanna clarify, so, when we first went after that money, we talked about borrowing the money, because we didn't have the school head money until later on.
Correct.
So we had to spend our money on funds, and then it became reimbursable.
Right, right, right.
Fifty-five percent.
Right, 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 exactly, but I guess.
I just wanna make sure, we, this, this grant wasn't there until after we started, and that was, that was pre-recorded, we had to start ball rolling and spend our money.
Correct.
We were always gonna spend, we had to put in so much money ahead.
Right, but what happened was that, we need to do a better job, when it comes to bond bills and, and stuff like that, we all have to be on the same page right at the beginning, that's all. I think we got there eventually.
Yes.
Anything else, anybody else? Well, Vicky, while you're there, um.
You know it's mine, because it has mine, it has accountant's office on it, so.
Oh, I made an assumption of that, but I wasn't gonna.
That's fine.
That's not, that's not what I was gonna request.
No, it's fine.
The question comes to the mailboxes, and your department, that's a kind of a continuing theme in, in the anonymous letters that we got, is the fact that we have the mailboxes, and it's been a policy that the bills have to be delivered to the second floor, before they'll be considered. Is there any good reason for that, or why can't we use the mailboxes that we paid money to have installed?
Um, well, and if you want me running up and down the stairs ten times a day to see if there's bills in there, then sure, but if you want your bills paid, why wouldn't you bring them to the place that would actually want them to be paid? The banks that come to your house and say, "Hey, you got your bills for me to pay?" You know? I mean, if you want your bills paid, if you want payroll to be paid, why wouldn't you bring them to the place that can actually do that for you?
It's two places.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do that.
That's okay.
But in a sense, the mailbox is the actual place.
I mean, can't we just have a schedule? I don't expect you to run up and down the stairs, although my, my office in my building is on the second floor, and I run up and down all day long, which is why I have this thin figure that I have. Um, but is there some schedule that you can say that, you know, two o'clock, or twelve o'clock, or pick a time, that, you know, it's gotta be there by then, and you'll come down and get them, or something? I mean, you have an assistant too, so I mean, it's not you that has to run the stairs.
But she's in the middle of processing all those, all those, all those warrants that people give us.
Well, and I only bring it up because it's a theme, and I wanna address the themes of the letter, the letters that we have, they are anonymous, and it's in every one of, or not everyone, that's not fair.
It, it's, everyone puts their mail there, I don't see why, you know, one staff person, maybe move the office downstairs someplace, if it's the stairs, but there is an elevator, it is handicapped accessible, she uses the elevator, it's, you know, she has bad knees or something, but it's where all mail goes, and that was why it was put in.
But, but, but for instance, does Reggie not email, or does your office not email the agenda to Eileen, she's put it in the mailbox?
I go and get it stamped, so.
And I can get it myself, you know, but I mean.
But I mean, it is a mailbox, and it is a.
You know what, if that's what you wanna do, then that's fine with me.
It's a point of contention with a lot of people.
With a lot of people, or just certain people?
I think it's in every letter.
So wait a minute, wait a minute.
All the other departments said that it's an issue for them to bring their stuff upstairs.
Wait a minute.
It's an issue, I mean, it's an issue for certain people to do that. The mailboxes were set up as a point of communication, that's why they're there. They didn't put a mailbox upstairs outside your office, right? They put the mailbox there, at the break room. You must go to the break room at some point in the day, at some point.
If the cutoff time is ten o'clock, say, I'm just saying, and if you drop your bills off, or your payroll, or whatever, the day or two before it's due, then fine, put it in the mailbox, because you know the bill's gonna get checked at least every day. But if the bills are due at ten, and you bring stuff over at five after, ten thirty, or whatever, then it might not get checked if they don't know it's there.
Why are the bills due at ten? It's not like we, you know, I'm confused as to why, it's not like a, you know, a date, today, my, my credit card bill is due on fifteen.
At two P M.
By two P M, it's, I, I kinda confused about this, this cutoff time.
Well, it's, has to be, there has to be a cutoff point.
Some point.
But once at ten, what's the cutoff? You know, you commit a bill.
For the warrant, to pay the warrant.
Right, I mean, you come in the building in the morning, and the bill, can't you go buy that thing, pull out or anything, and if it's not there at eight o'clock in the morning, it's late. Can't you empty the box once a day?
Yeah, does everything have to be on that next warrant? I mean, sometimes a warrant's, you know, stuff comes in on a regular basis, well, my catch used to say, by the day before, the warrant has to be done, any bills you want on that warrant have to be in the mailbox, and none of this ten o'clock the day of, just say, "Hey, you gotta get it there."
Well, that's what it is. The warrants prepare supposedly, right, for Tuesday.
Tuesday signatures.
Right, but it happens every, every two weeks, if not more frequently, that the warrant is put together, so it's, so, you know what I'm saying, it's not like, it's not like, oh my God, I gotta, you know, I think there's too much pressure on the system doing it that way. I think just, if you just say, you know, you got twenty-four hours, you have the bills in, that're gonna go on the warrant for the next meeting, and it'd be as simple as that.
And if, if they come in.
After that, they go on to the next warrant.
And what if they're gonna be late then? What if their due date is before?
Well, then it goes back to the department heads to have the bills in the day before for the next warrant. I mean, you have thirty days, how long has the thing been sitting on your desk?
Okay, wait.
Sometimes, sometimes things are set on people's desks.
Well, it shouldn't, I mean, you get a bill, put it in the mailbox, right?
Right, so, I'm just, I mean, the way I operate, and I don't pay my bills at home, my husband does, but you have to pay your bills when they come in, or they're going to be late, and I don't think that there's anything wrong, I mean, I pay the cafeteria lunch bills, and they have to be to Joyce by Thursday at ten A M. So I get that there needs to be a deadline, because otherwise you're chasing things that you shouldn't have to chase. I make it a point to get them here on Wednesday, so that there's not an issue. But if that timeframe is Thursday at ten, is it fair to say, and I don't mind going up the stairs, just, we talk about soccer, but if your bills are not here, you can put your bills in the mailbox until ten o'clock on Thursday, or noon on Wednesday. Leave them in the mailbox. If they're not in the mailbox by noon on Wednesday, then you need to walk up the stairs and hand them to me. That way, they're paid in the appropriate amount of time, so that you have time to process them, and so that they get onto the warrant. If you can't have them in the mailbox by noon the day before you need them, then walk them upstairs.
And, and my only comment to that is, if somebody walks in and you picked up the box at eight o'clock in the morning, and I walk in at ten, and I need it paid by eleven, then I'm gonna make the trip up the stairs. But, you know, if, if I walk in in the morning, stick it in your box at eight o'clock, I don't understand why someone can't go in and grab it and pick it upstairs and pay it. I would say to you that at ten o'clock, if I walk in at ten o'clock that day, and I need it paid by eleven, then I gotta make the trip.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm saying.
No, I'm agreeing, I, I.
Okay.
Maybe I wasn't catching everything you said.
Got it. So basically, the departments have to take responsibility for getting the bills to their mailbox.
But I, I think the town hall has to establish, this is the time we're gonna empty the box, and.
Yeah, if it's not there, then.
If it's not there, it's not there, and then they all, they need to bring it upstairs to you.
The other thing, Michael, is, is another warrant within two weeks. I mean, it's not like.
No, but there are some, I can't, you know, there are some things that aren't gonna.
But you have, you get a bill, and you have thirty days to pay it, so.
Not necessarily.
I don't even think that's like an issue.
Can we ask them, I guess, can we ask them in light of these things, to consider establishing a policy for emptying the box, that people can use the box to deposit their things? To deposit their bills?
But they can leave them there if they want.
That sounds like you're giving us a challenge, at, at your risk of leaving there, I, I, that's not satisfactory. It's gotta be, if you're gonna leave them, you're gonna empty the box at eight o'clock in the morning, and ten o'clock, or five o'clock at night, but they need to know when you're gonna empty the box, so that if I'm doing things around here, and I know, oh, she's gonna empty the box at ten o'clock, I'm gonna have my bill in there by nine o'clock. I think that only makes sense. But I think we're looking for you to establish a policy that seems to be an irritant to people, to, to fix a problem that seems to be an irritant to people. Chief?
Yes. Um, what I find interesting about this conversation is that there've been a number of times where I'll bring the bills over, say on Wednesday, put them in the box, or sometimes Thursday, and lately, I seem to be getting emails from Joyce about problems with bills on Monday.
Chief, I'm gonna ask you, we're not trying to, we're not using personalities at this point.
Okay. So lately, I've been getting emails on Monday from the accountant's office pursuant to the bills, where there's a problem with one of the bills, on Monday, not on Thursday, not on Wednesday, even though the bills were essentially available to them by that time period. Uh, and so that leads me to believe that the bills actually aren't being processed on Thursday, even when they are there by ten o'clock, or eleven o'clock, or what happened on Thursday. They're not getting actually handled and processed whereby an alleged problem had been found until Monday. So, one of the things that also I've experienced is that, with so many accounts we have, on Friday, because I work Friday, a bill come in, and it's got maybe a three-week turnaround, and it has to be processed now, or to wait for the next bill cycle, it'll surely be late. So, I've had some success in working with the accountant's office on getting those last-minute bills processed when they come in. But I would like to tell the board about the recent alleged problem with a bill that I have with Costco.
Chief, I'm, we're gonna ask you to stop here, because I don't wanna get into specific items, and I, and I know everybody's chafing it a bit to, to tell their story, but the issue here, would you be agreeable that if the, you could put the invoices in the accountant's box at cer, by a certain time, it would be beneficial or helpful to you?
To me?
No, I'm looking at the chief. Actually, I'm, I'm addressing that issue to all department heads that are here. You know, would it be beneficial to know that you have to, that you can use the mailbox, that you can deliver your items there by a certain time, and that if you're late, you're gonna make the trip to the second floor, not that I think that's a big deal, but you're Not that I think that's a big deal, but you're going to make a trip, you know.
Well, it seems to be a big deal.
I'd like you to comment on that as well. And I'm one of the guys that doesn't like to go to the second floor because of the hostilities that have occurred here. So I have worked out something with the accountant whereby in order to keep the peace, that I would put them in the box and I would let you know. And I think for the most part, that's worked out fairly well.
But if we have a time that the box is going to be emptied, if that's what the recommendation is here, and I'm not making that, I'm just assuming for now that, thinking hypothetically, if the box was emptied at a certain time, would that be beneficial to you? Would that solve some of the problems?
Yes, if there was like a drop dead time as far as if the thing was actually going to be processed, but what value was there in putting it in on Wednesday or Thursday if it's not going to be processed till Monday?
Well, I guess it's up to the accountant's office to establish their procedures for getting the bills in. My question is, the Aunt Kirsten seems to be the second floor business. Trying to rectify that, come up with a solution or a compromise between the two positions that if you bring your bills in by, if she says 8 o'clock on Thursday, 8 a.m., if they're there, fine. If you drop them off on Tuesday during the day, you can just leave them and at 8 o'clock in the morning, they're going to get pissed up. But if you come in and you need something done after 8 o'clock, you've got to take it to the second floor.
Lately, Mike, I have tried to get them in on Wednesdays, maybe advance when it works out. But, you know, I think it's important also to recognize that I don't have a secretary. I'm trying to run a police department. I go on calls. Processing bills isn't the only responsibility we have.
No, I understand that.
So there's certainly going to be times where I might not even get them there on Wednesday or Thursday, and that has happened.
And then the department, that department has to understand that because of an emergency and has to work around what has happened. And I would think that probably happens with highway, police, and fire, where these issues come up that prevent you from getting more bills in on time. We're not going to simply say at that point in time, sorry, you know, you didn't get them in on time just because there was a 10 o'clock pileup and we had injuries to take care of and you didn't get your bills in. No, I think at that point in time, there needs to be cooperation between the departments. At least, that would be my assumption about what would happen.
Well, just as a reminder, have been occasions whereby I've been informed that something would have to wait for the next bill cycle.
Well, at that point in time, I think we should have a meeting again. That should not happen. If there's a legitimate reason why they're later or, you know, an excusable neglect kind of deal where something happened and slipped through the cracks, I think at that point in time, the department heads have to work it out and/or come to us again. Anybody?
I think it should be a definite time in a day on when the bills have to be in.
Well, that's why we picked Thursday at 10. So if we did get instances where things came in later on Thursday after 10 or on Monday, what's, what we've had up to that point can be processed and there's time to process those late things.
Will I answer this question? Say there's a timeframe Thursday at 10. The department head has a real bad week and can't get to it because there's some follow up and you've got to need that person's phone call should we make you to just get that top, that's it? And you should try to make that work. That's all.
But can, can we ask you to formulate a policy on your mailbox and send it out to people?
As long as people are going to follow it, sure.
That, well, if they don't follow it, then you need to address it with us again.
Okay.
And that would be my request. One second. Did anybody have a problem with that? I guess I spoke out.
I think it's a great idea and all I was going to say was there's been times when, you know, holidays come or the schools had a half day and my bills haven't been done and I get a little nervous because, you know, I want to make sure that we're going to get the food delivered and I simply pick up the phone and say, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. Can I bring them? And it's not generally a problem and that would probably be part of the communication issue is the way you speak to people and the way you communicate has a direct reflection on the way that you're treated. So if you need something, you should put your nicest voice on and ask really nice and probably you'll get what you need.
So you asked for comments from department chairs. From the board of health, I think it's more than reasonable to have a deadline for the use of the mailbox. If it's anything beyond the deadline that needs to be paid, you walk it up the stairs. More than reasonable. Just a comment, again, if somebody's having a problem with the accounting office, they shouldn't have to come in the board of selectmen, they should talk to each other, you know.
Final result, the, the, final place to be is us.
I guess that's news to me that there's other people besides a certain few individuals that have had problems with the boxes, so I guess that's news to me.
Then I'm glad.
Because everybody, because everyone will walk them up the stairs and, or leave them under the door and.
Well, then there's two people who are walking up the stairs and regaling. Any other on that issue? Is that I want to come back. I only got the book, the personnel policy book, clearly amended on May 8th of 1993, page 10, definitions, part-time employee shall mean an employee working less than full-time employee. That's a great definition. Provided however, only part-time employees working in a regular set schedule of at least 20 hours shall be entitled to sick time, vacation time extended on and on. So in order to get benefits, you have to work more than 20 hours. Any employee who works less than 20 hours and is not covered by a union contract, if I read that correctly, should not be getting benefits.
And that's 90, that's the 93 one, so that it's not the 97 one?
The 90? I was, I said 97 before, but I think this is the one I.
It was amended in 97.
It was.
And it's also been changed since then.
Well, if we're looking at it, I suggest, I mean, if we're looking at it, for purposes of making it a determination, let's make sure we have the right copies.
I thought it was 97. I could think there was a 97 one too, but this is the one 93. And then, then there's one more app that has to distribute it to employees that says, reformatted.
Reformatted, 2007.
That one was distributed to people, that's how I understand it.
It was just retyped.
But it was retyped.
So how do we get that one to everybody and shred all the other ones?
That's the PQB if that could work.
Okay, well, then we're on the next change. Can I be heard on this point and just employment law again? You know, you want to make sure that you didn't disseminate something, even if it wasn't valid and have people believing that it was valid, that's a problem. So, you know, you need to pick a start point and say this point forward, otherwise there could be an issue.
That's the problem we're working on. That was, that's what PQB is trying to solve. Because there was multiple. There was the impression that there was another version in 2007, but in fact, that 2007 version was supposed to only be a retyped version and not made changes. So, but it was confusing because it said 2007 and people were assuming it was a new version in 2007 and we couldn't find it. So, but anyway, that, that one that I mean has on file clearly states that to get benefits, you have to be 20 hours or more.
Can we go back to the mailbox in when you're done for a second? I'm going to go back to the mailbox 10 seconds.
I just want to comment. So, Michael, if somebody got a benefit, they weren't entitled to, they have to reimburse the town.
There's an appointment lawyer who I'm, which I am not.
No, you can't take something.
I'm just making sure, I mean, just, in case someone asks that question, like another town employee says, well, she shouldn't have gotten or he shouldn't have gotten, how come they didn't take it back? I just want to make sure that we had, say something about it so it helps.
Do you want me to answer that question?
No, if you want, I don't.
Well, I can tell you, again, I do wage and hour litigation. So, chapter 149, Massachusetts general law is a wage and hour. And if somebody's promised something, whether you should have promised it or not, it's a wage and it cannot be taken back retrospectively, period, or it's a wage violation for which you're subject to triple damages and attorney's fees. So I would suggest two weeks vacation is not worth messing around with. Create a new rule, move forward, and make it, make sure.
No new rule, just follow the old rule.
Right, well, apparently there's some, some question over what was the rule and what was disseminated, which is a problem. So make it clear, this is the rule or whatever.
But again, I have to stop the comments. First time in 10 years, it's a problem. And I don't understand why it's a problem. 10 years. But anyways.
Just a question. Is there a reason why all this isn't on our website to make it real crystal clear to everybody?
I've got the answer to you. Because it's not properly meaning, everybody may think that, which is a problem.
Money worth being spent.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, this is.
The files are on the white page.
Yeah, they are there.
I need an IV type.
Yeah, they're there.
It's just, there is some confusion over the dates. And there is some confusion and that was a long meeting again about that. I don't like to keep saying it, but we went over this number of dates last Tuesday night for Edna's.
Well, I just have an observation on that issue and that is, who made the promise? If the employer makes the promise as part of hiring somebody, then it would hold true and that person would be entitled to that benefit. If a committee who this person doesn't work for, where do they gain the authority to grant this benefit such that the personnel board makes a determination that this person is entitled, which is a disparity from what other people working the same amount of hours are? I mean, there was no contract, as I understand it. So what's the difference between the employer making this promise versus an interpretation and why is that un-retractable?
Here's, here's my solution to this problem and maybe I'm. I mean, how many people do you think are getting benefits who work 18 hours or 20 hours or less?
I don't know. I don't know how many probably there are.
I'm sorry, you don't know anyone?
There aren't any.
But some are.
Well, then it's a couple that I know.
Alan, do you know within the department how many? Here's, here's my suggestion for a solution. Contact town attorney, lay it out for him, tell him we'll have to get to all the books and say, we may have an employee or more than one employee who are rece, have been receiving benefits for less than 18 hours and shouldn't be, how do we fix it? Because it is unfair to those people who aren't getting the benefit. And I agree with Lisa, if it was only one, two week period, it's cheap to just keep paying it. But the other people may either agitate for it or those that have it should give it up. So my suggestion would be contact town attorney, lay out the problem for him and see what his suggestion is that either whether we bring everybody up to that level or we bring those people back or we let it ride and then work it out from there.
It's open to me.
No, but I think we should ask. I think for the sake of the employees that aren't getting the benefit, we should ask if they're advised to do it or whatever.
It's a payroll week, so we should do that sooner than later so we don't continue.
Well, that's my suggestion. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Some moved. What you just said.
Thanks. Is there a second?
Second.
Does anybody have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Do we have a, Mike, do we have a list of all town employees who are working less than 20 hours?
That's what I'm guessing.
We're going to get one.
Oh, you can put, I just don't know what to talk about.
I guess we get a list of everybody that's on health insurance. And just match the two lists. And if someone's getting health insurance and working less than 20, then it's a problem.
Not all of them.
So why wouldn't they be included?
They try to come on the talks with the senior board, tell them that, and they respond. Says right there, no school personnel.
What about the employee who's hired for 15 to 18 hours a week or whatever, but they continually work more than 20 for like a year? Then are they entitled to it?
I don't think that the policy states if you're hired that. I think it states if you work more, so.
I think you have to back.
There was a question, yeah, a few years ago, there was a question about someone drifting in and out and it was going to be a logistic nightmare. This week, they worked 20, next week, they worked 10, do they now lose their benefits? It was, it was a discussion about that when we were the other town.
But even if it's not health insurance benefit.
But I'm just saying, that was sort of the, yeah, like sort of defining, you know, part-time, full-time. We had a whole discussion about it and I think the attorneys weighed it.
The attorney said regular set schedule $20, so that's what the words were. Up Town Council in 2007.
But if someone, say, hired seven or eight years ago for 18 hours or less and now for the last four years, say, every pay period, they've worked more than that.
Then we probably have to.
Then, how do you know what I mean? It's not clear, so that, should they be entitled to benefits?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, is it budgeted 20 hours and budgeted 30 hours?
Right.
You go over budget every year if they're working more than 20 hours.
That becomes the department.
So the size of the department, how they.
Well, it's over budget. I mean, the line is for 20 hours a year, but if they're on average working 30, then that line's overspent.
And it may not be the boys' fault, but if they went to PQB and they signed off on a PCF for 18 hours and now they've gone more than that, they should have gone in for a change.
And then that line gets funded at a different light and then we don't have the deficits we see in the spring. Because that could, that can be a leading cause for that as well.
The department had a problem. All right, moving on.
Wait. We need to go back to mailboxes.
So.
Oh, all right.
So is it a generalization to say that I can leave stuff in people's mailboxes also?
Yes.
That's what it is.
That's what it is.
Okay. I'm just asking that question.
Can I just clarify though about the deposits that need to go up to you because?
Oh, the turnovers?
The turnovers. So I just want to, I mean, I guess my opinion would be that if you're giving money to the treasurer's office, we're talking about money, we're talking about things that we've had issues with.
Are we talking about cash?
Well, you know, if you bring a deposit down, any kind of turnover. And, you know, and you bring it in and so we've met with the auditors and we need to have some checks and balances there, I would say that those things need to be brought upstairs. Not left in the mailbox.
Somebody should be getting a receipt for that.
According to the auditors, we have been doing it wrong. We always took a copy to ourselves, we left both to treasurer's. What they want now is one in the treasurer's office and one in the accountant's office. It's the opposite person that brings in those turnovers, delivers them to the accountant's office and the treasurer's office.
Right, and not a week later. Like if you bring money in, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I bring thousands of dollars in and I want to make sure that everybody has a receipt of that. What I don't want to see happen is you drop the money off and then, you know, I just think it's money, it needs to be brought right upstairs. I think that that is, that's kind of important.
The main things we were talking about when we had the management letter, that they want to have a copy of that turnover in the accountant's office so it can be verified independently against the treasurer's proceeds. And the department head will also have to prove that they have their copy as a third. What were you saying, Donna?
Because Pat, the partner, mentioned that she has a few municipalities now and that's a big front part. Like she wouldn't be counting on it so much if it wasn't, if she didn't have some audits going on now, that that's a big front piece for her.
So I just want to make sure that I'm the same.
Also, yeah, exactly.
You bring money in and you drop it off, you need to bring the receipt upstairs. I do, I mean, I do it every day, so I'm not.
But that's a, that's a pot, not a, not bills.
Not bills.
Bills are, we, we, separate issue.
Yes.
Good point, though. Where was I going? Anything else?
I don't.
Oh.
I was going to say a mailbox or other?
Other. Well, Jackie, we're going to do another, we're holding, go down, there's another.
Okay, I have received complaints, verbal complaints about policies that have been changed by different committees. And I'm referring back to this policy on the establishment adoption of policies in number four, which says the board shall schedule a public hearing to be held at a regularly scheduled meeting to consider adopting the draft policy, provided the notices of such hearing is provided to the departments impacted posted on the section, notice section of the town's website on the bulletin board for at least 14 calendar days prior to a public hearing. In other words, you know, if you're in a department or a committee, you can't just change a policy without it first going in front of the board. Is that what they're trying to say there? I mean, don't you think that we should discuss something before it's?
I don't have what you're reading.
Change, it's right here. Number four. Actually, I have one here, that's one. Number four, so that, so that when a policy is changed in any department, that it's reviewed first before it becomes.
Well, if you intend to make that a bylaw, then we have to go through the procedures for adoption of a bylaw. If you wanna make something like, I don't know, we have that protocol or something like that.
I think that would kinda be really micromanaging on a single, because if anyone can call anything sort of changed, you would get, you would get really sort of bogged down to yourself. I think we'd have to more common senseical.
Well, if it's an existing bylaw they're trying to change, they can't just change it because it's a bylaw, they're saying, "We're changing it."
No, no, I mean, the intent, I mean, they can't change it. Right, I mean, the intent of the bylaw is to sort of put more reins on how things get moved around and say, so Vicki does something differently, it's no big deal, but someone says, "Well, that was a policy change," and so all of a sudden it gets catastrophized.
Those are, I mean, I think, we talk policy changes, I mean, there's regulations and policy, again, bylaws, you know, I mean, like, policy procedure book, that's a bylaw. But in the bylaw, it has a section that if you're going to make a change or something, you need to have a hearing. And the hearing will be, I might be wrong in this, with the board of selectmen, and approved by the board of selectmen after a hearing has been offered to the policy.
So maybe I'm confused, what do you mean by "policy change"? I don't know what this was talking about. What do you mean by "policy change"? Like, you put it in the mailbox, upstairs, or?
Yeah, I think that's the intent of the policy.
So, I mean, anything can be a policy, and then, so what I'm saying, if you could get really down on the leads, as Jess would say, of micromanaging everything, because there wasn't a hearing about this, and it's not right, and it's gonna be, you know.
And if I can take it, and I'm not making any, uh, fifty, but I'm saying, let's say, we say the mailbox is empty at ten o'clock, and she changes it to qualified. According to this, she needs to notify.
Right, but all the departments are okay with that, because they're communicating, and everyone's okay with that. So you would open up a whole can of worms about, all right, you know, what's the policy on this, what's, I mean, you would just get kinda, it would cook you kinda crazy. Jackie, I'm just saying, it just, sometimes, you know, somebody can call a policy a policy, when it's just, they're just doing things.
Can I ask a question? This didn't circulate to everybody, did it? No, right?
No, just the select board.
So, can I make a suggestion that maybe before we say up or down?
I don't think we've got a vote on this tonight.
No, no, what I'm saying, we should circulate it to the town, to the town employees, to town, town boards and that, and have them review it, and then speak to it as it is.
Well, I, I certainly think it would apply to, you know, somebody's pay, somebody's benefits, you know, if something changes, uh, it should be reviewed by the select board.
You know, just have to.
When it's major.
Well, you didn't say that before, so you have to sort of, and I get your point, Jackie, I'm just saying, you could all of a sudden, if somebody didn't like Vicki for some reason, and Vicki decided to change something, they could complain that there was a policy change, and it would just get kinda passed on.
Right, no, I don't, I, that's what I'm trying to do, is, you know, it's like having a game with no rules. And, you know, just you have to have, if we need to reiterate, the department heads, if they need to hear their bylaws or their policies, what have you, then we, you know, we need to do that. There's people that are here that are new, that need to know them. You've been here a long time, but there's a lot of people that are new, and they need to hear them again. Do they need to be posted somewhere? I mean, I don't know, what the.
When you're talking bylaws and stuff, I'm talking about, when you're talking about policy, you're talking about day-to-day function that these people are doing when they're working here in the town, although we're doing our other lives. And, and they have to be, have the flexibility to sort of, this is how things are gonna change, and, and if just one person says, "I don't like that change," out of the majority, then they're gonna say, "It's a policy change, there's no hearing," and blah, 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 and it could get nasty again, versus.
Well, that's what I'm trying to not, I don't want it to get nasty. If there's gonna be a change, then let's talk about it, so that each employee is aware of the change, and it doesn't all of a sudden show up in their paycheck, or doesn't show up, you know, somewhere in their lives, that they weren't aware of it. And it's, it comes back to communication. That's what I'm trying to do, you know, that's what these policies are for.
Jackie's been advocating this for some time, and I think to give it a fair shot at seeing if there's anything deep down the bone, we send it out to all employees or boards and see what.
I just worried about going too far on it, but that's.
I understand.
I'd just like to note that there's a difference between policies and procedures. Policies are something that you set. Procedures are something a department will set, such as, "Get the bills in by ten a.m.," whatever. Uh, I don't think procedures are something you need to work with. You've got bigger issues to deal with. So please think policies or procedures.
Thank you.
Took the words right out of my mouth.
Well, thank you.
By the way, happy birthday.
Happy.
Happy birthday. Why don't you show suspended with us?
Yeah, that's pretty pathetic, isn't that a question?
Does anybody wanna make a motion about what we do with this proposal from Jackie?
I would make a motion that we distribute to the town hall and ask the employees for some feedback.
No, I'm not just talking about the town employees.
Town employees, sorry.
I wouldn't have been into that.
Town employees.
Well, I think it should be departments, you know, or committees, anybody that's gonna affect, I think, how about the citizens and stuff?
All right, so they're hanging a motion. Is there a second? Jackie?
Can I suck at my own, uh?
Yeah.
I did, can I suck it?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any ayes?
Amen.
Thanks. Any abstentions?
I want to abstain, just because it's Jackie's.
Oh, thanks.
But I'll go, yay.
Um, anybody else, anything else? Yes?
It's a small thing, but it's, uh, it's on my talking points, and I, I have to confess, I don't know what it means. Um, and part of the problem is, is some of this is from employees who can't be here, because they're only part-time and not paid to come tonight. Um, but, "Town hall building cross-trained with regards to heating and air conditioning and computers, or at least provide contact information if the offices close." Does anybody know what that means?
Yes. Um, over in the Board of Health and Building Inspector Office, the temperatures over there vary tremendously, due to the fact that we had a broken duct, um, due to the fact that the Board of Health is right above the boiler, and it gets hot and it gets cold. The S and E company had cut off that computer dial, every office has it, we used to have the availability to lower and raise. We cannot do that no longer, because folks were changing it too much, and it was throwing off the system. Um, as far as controls go, nobody has controls. Um, Ed is the next person to call if there's a problem. Actually, Ed's the first person, he's in charge of the buildings.
I don't get office, I don't know, how are we getting to these offices?
Paul is, well, they're there. Paul is the maintenance person, and I am also one that can help you out, but that's.
I don't have access, just, I don't have access to the control, I don't know.
We, we set you up with the user ID, but I know you have.
I'm leaving in sixty days, so I think it's a new question. Uh, as you're telling me, but you do have the capability to control, unless they took that away from you, each room. So, anybody who wants to change the temperature, can see Reggie, she can set and change those. You don't have to call me, you know, that doesn't move until.
Can anybody but Reggie do it? I mean, again, Reggie's too busy to do the website and other things, and now she's gotta be responsible for micromanaging everybody's temperature in the building? It's crazy.
The temperature should be set, I mean, in high and low range, all right, and the heat goes down at a particular time of the night, and kicks on about maybe six-thirty in the morning to get it back up, all right? Uh, and we also can program various rooms that aren't gonna be used in the course of the day, to keep it at that, maybe fifty-five or sixty. But active rooms are supposed to come up to a workable condition.
I mean, if it's not, then they report it to me, then I call S and E, and then they look at it behind the scenes.
So, can I ask, that sounds crazy. Why aren't we doing that?
Can we go back in time about five years, the old town hall?
I know.
Everybody had little heaters in the rooms. So, this is the town hall, we'll go back, we actually come forward, I mean, everyone had little heaters underneath their desks all over the, the town hall. So this is actually quite, you know, obviously, I'm not here during the day, but it's much better than the past. Could it be better? Perhaps.
It's actually just one.
Are you serious?
I'm here, my wife texts.
Wow, that's awesome.
Are you serious? No, I'm lying.
All right, get in the back.
That's great.
And, I'll.
I've got two, one in, in general, uh, from the finance base point of view, is that we oftentimes have difficulty getting backup to, uh, request for a reserve fund. So we're, we're requesting backup on everything now, and if we don't get it, our policy.
For those, what do you mean by that?
Documentation. Uh, one that we've had problems with in the past are, are legal fees. We get a bill for three thousand dollars because the legal budget is over, and they want the transfer. We say, "Fine, but we need the backup." We, we don't get the backup, or refuse the backup. And the only backup we need, I don't wanna see Mary Jo Smith, I just wanna see a date and the number of hours and the total cost, so we can reconcile it. And we happen to have an attorney on the finance committee, and, like she says, "I'd never give a bill without the, you know, the breakdown." So we don't, we don't want no personal stuff, we, we just don't want a statement that says, "Four thousand dollars."
I'll just say, this should be fairly easy, we should get, give you a statement.
It should be, you're right.
You should get a copy of the invoice that we gave.
Uh, I, I would agree, and that's what I wanna bring out here. It's not your turn now.
Well, I.
But we're asking that for anything.
We're thinking about the work tonight.
Yeah, we're asking that for anything going forward, and, uh, the other thing is, and this happens to be out of Reggie's office, when two, can't speak that way, when you send out emails from you to you, and it has a whole bunch of people on there, it's kinda disheartening, because if you're sending out email to me and five other people, when I get the email, I'd like to see who it was sent to, not from me to me, kind of disguising. There's no need to disguise communication that's coming out like that.
I think it does say for me, heard and, heard and heard, but it also has, has a list of the.
Sometimes it doesn't. Doesn't have.
They say, "Some people don't want their emails to be publicized, so it's blank copied."
It's public records, though, when you send out an email, so we need, I, I don't wanna, I don't want any more emails.
They specifically ask, so the reason why is, that's why they're blank copied.
But if a town employee, it doesn't matter if they ask or not, it is public record.
If they're, if they're.
We already get it sent, so it's public record.
Yeah.
I would concur on that point, and I've had the same issue.
It's just.
You don't know who's getting it.
Why, is there something being hidden? Probably not.
Nothing's being hidden.
Right, but it gives the, it gives the.
Impression of.
Impression of it. And I think, and I think that's one of the issues with some of the communication going on, and be open, be upfront, you know?
If there's a private person, and they have requests, and you can't, shouldn't send it out.
But if they ask, somebody send it out publicly, it's public record, I mean, the law is pretty clear.
All right, let's see about that.
Um, actually, now that you said that, it's a, a good point. We've had some problems with Board of Health with an email about, about, our, someone, Reggie's telling us our box is full or something, and, and, um, just to finish, that it's, we're having problems with email, and the response is that our box is full, and that we needed to delete email, we're not supposed to delete email, so, I, we shouldn't be deleting email for the purposes of our email to be working, and so if there's a problem with that, that needs to be fixed, because nobody should be deleting emails.
May I?
Except on a certain.
I need to clarify, the email's on a server. The server goes into your outbox. When Bianca had her computer installed, the IT person set it up incorrectly to leave the email messages onto the server for fourteen days. Hence the reasoning why she was receiving that message. He came back and fixed it. We can't have all those emails on, on the server, but you cannot delete them from your computer. We need to delete them from the server.
Well, as I understand it, we don't, we don't control the server.
Nope, the server has to do with the website.
Right, so we didn't have access to it, so there's nothing that we can do to get our emails, so to respond to delete stuff off of our email, it's not gonna help us, when all we have control of is our outbox and our inbox on the computer.
You have control in your, um, at Microsoft Outlook. You do have control, because you're bringing it into your computer.
My point is this, we shouldn't be deleting anything but our public records, they need to be kept, and if they can't be kept, there's a problem.
Even after you delete them, it's still there, because it's still on the hard drive.
All right, we're looking, is the message coming from Reggie, or from a, like, generic Microsoft message that you need to empty your box?
It was, it was, we were having failure, our email wasn't working, so it was the system telling us that you needed to do something, we went to Reggie, and Reggie said, "Well, we needed to delete it." "We need to delete our inbox," but we can't do that, so that's a problem.
When we send out what your email is, it comes back to us, and your email is.
Right, right.
It's from the server, from the webmail, Jack Fly, has nothing to do with the town of Southampton. Jack Fly hosts the website, they host all our emails. It's not, he can't hold all those emails, otherwise that server's gonna go down.
I delete my emails, because I know there's some ways.
You are following, you do it from your Outlook, but you do not delete it. Maybe John's tapped it from his server.
All right, it's what it's talking about, then.
I mean, there's cloud servers that are cheap, I, I don't understand. Why would, yeah, I mean, but I, I just went through a session where you have to keep the emails in, out, sent, except for certain ways, or litigation is coming our way.
The emails aren't saved on the server unless they're there, there are less copies left there, because when I took office, my emails were all deleted, uh, as the treasurer left us, uh, before I started, there was not one email left, and I was told there was no access. That is town property.
Yeah, that's a problem.
I figure all my emails are in her sent file, so.
They're there, right?
I have my house emails.
Yeah, so if anybody's looking what I got for emails from the, from the town administrator there.
Let's get back on track here. Anything else on communication from anybody? Ruth?
Yeah. I'm a town employee in the town hall here. I'm a department head and a worker. I've been sitting here listening to all of this tonight. I don't see that much. I don't know, if someone asks me tomorrow what we came up with. Nothing, nothing. There's gotta be.
What would you?
Every, the board of selectmen send a representative to each department in Southampton, or department or, or in Southampton. The town hall workers, if they don't belong with their boss as well, are you? They might not complain. Who are they gonna go to? They can't go to the PPP board, there's two of us on there. I don't, I don't get, oh, I talked to people, I said, "Are you going Tuesday night?" And I was told, "Well, I don't think so," or "No." The answer, that's one of the answers right there. I don't want it televised, I don't wanna tell the town what's going on, I'm afraid to speak to anybody, oh, not me, but they're afraid to speak to anybody.
Why, why do you think they're afraid, Ruthie, though?
Afraid?
Yeah.
To stand here, we knew you'd be watched, and half the town is listening to you.
But I mean, it could be a healthy thing.
I was told that Channel Five is blank right now, that nobody's, it's not all, it's just being recorded and not spoken.
Okay, that's pretty nice, I'm watching myself getting recorded now.
But we weren't told that when we came in, whether it was being televised or recorded.
How can this not be a telltale?
But what I'm trying to say is, I can know where to go, and I have a problem. What I mean, I literally know, I can go anywhere.
Ruthie, we, we talked about this before, about maybe changing the bylaw for PQB, so it can't be town employees on that committee. We talked about that in the past. And it may be something to think about, to change the bylaw, the annual, to change that, and, because you, you need to, I think you need to have some, some options.
We, we went through this so many times.
Ruthie, what would you suggest? Do you wanna contact person?
Yeah, yeah, say, okay. We, we don't belong to a union either, okay?
Wait, 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 you guys voted that down?
No, wait a minute. I was also advised by someone who used to be in your position, that I should get my head out of my you-know-what and deal with it, join the union. Which I thanked them very much for their advice.
But I think you guys almost did that. You almost did it a while ago.
You're not afraid, you guys don't understand.
Ruthie, that would.
We're in a retribution.
Okay, but how do we, how do we fix that? That's my question to you.
We should have people on the PT board that work in the town hall.
Right.
I don't like to see a member of the board selected that I could talk to, and not actually listen.
Ruthie, anytime you wanna call me, you can.
I think, I know, I think too, that, you know, there's been, well, Ed, because he comes in all the time, but only one other select board member that has actually ever come in since I've been here and said, "How's it going? You know, how are things running in your office? Do you need anything? You know, how's it, to really, and I don't think that you guys know, because there's not that communication, so that the employees don't feel like they have anyone that they can go to.
Well, back.
With a, with a real issue.
Back in the, back in the day before we had a town administrator, the, the selectmen were, in my opinion, were a little different. Because when I was chair back in two thousand and five, if I wanted to know anything, you know, we had somebody working as administrator assistant, but she was, she had her own health issues, and she wasn't around as much, so if I wanted to know what was going on, I was in Sylvia's office, Bug and Dave, who was over the highway, I was in Eileen's office, I was in Chrissy's office, I was in Dave's office, and I was the only way you could find out what was going on in the town hall. Then we transitioned to a, a central, kind of a strong town administrator in Diana, and she then became the focal point. And I think select persons elected after that may not have been used to actually seeking out firsthand information. And I've, I don't think I told you this too, I think you need to go make time to meet the department heads, to sit down to talk to them, and find out what's going on. You can't have it filtered through anybody, you, you still need to have that communication with the department heads. And my schedule is insane, it's why I'm not chair right now, but I did try to make an effort when I was chair to do that, and I did go to your office, I did go to Dave's office, and I bug it all the time. But I tried to make that communication link, and I'm serious, if somebody has a problem, you can call me at home, and I'll, I'll take the time to listen. Um, I may not have the answer, but I will listen. Um, but I think the newer select persons coming up through the ranks don't have that experience. And I think until we get a strong town administrator in that position that sort of coordinates this thing, we're gonna be adrift for a while.
Well, I, I think you have employees here too that feel like the board's not gonna do anything anyway. They're gonna not, they're gonna not do anything with the problems, or the personality conflicts, or whatever might have you, um, and so, why bother saying anything if nothing's gonna happen?
All right, Ruthie, you want to say something again?
No.
So, um, two points. One, the response to Ruth, and, and it's just a general thing that you see kind of in the industry. Um, if, if a person has a complaint about somebody who is their boss, then, then there's usually, municipalities or companies have a procedure that's publicized to the employees and say, "This is the liaison, if your boss is the problem, and you've already went to your boss and it's the problem, this is the, this is the person you can talk to, you know, either in confidence or not in confidence." So whether it be a, be a board liaison, or two people, let's say it's somebody on the board, and let's say it's the town administrator. You know, two people, so that there is a confidential method, and I happen to concur with Ruth, that this is, this is an oppressive setting for somebody who has concerns about the workplace to come in front of a full board of selectmen meeting, which arguably is televised or not televised, it's not designed to get to the root of the real problem. You know, that, that should be done during the workday, in the privacy of these people's offices if they have concerns. I mean, that's how things, that's how complaints usually get investigated, and that's a real, that's, I'm gonna use that as a technical legal word. If we have repetitive complaints, and we know the source, but then people repeat it anonymously, and it gets to the board of selectmen, that should be investigated. You know, we should look into that, and it doesn't have to be as formal or fancy as, as, as some people think, it should be looked into. If there's a common problem, a common thread, it needs to be fixed.
I mean, I was nine, and I assumed everybody who were to get, because I'm out of town by eight o'clock in the morning, and I'm back until five o'clock at night. But, um, I guess I just assumed that everybody knew how to get, certainly, I talked to some of the department heads on the courses during the day, but.
Right, well, you, you're also assuming that people feel comfortable, like they can, they could and should pick up the phone, and whether it's appropriate or not. Not everybody has the same level of experience about dealing with problems in the workplace. So, it sounds like there are problems, and there should be ways to fix it.
Ruthie again?
Yeah, I have no problem with my own. She's tired tomorrow.
I would take your pants off her neck. Um, anybody else? So why haven't we televised that?
Alex, what do you have there? To the select board. I was standing up there, to the select board.
Well, well, I can't.
I'll explain, the majority of the people did not want to speak because it was being televised live.
So it's not, is it being televised or not?
It's being televised but not live.
Okay.
So why is that? People did not want to come forward if it was gonna be live.
It shouldn't be a secret.
So it's not a secret.
Well, you didn't want to say it.
All right, all right, we're gonna avoid that whole controversy. All right, one, bring you up to date, where are we?
You are being recorded.
And we're gonna be broadcast later?
Yes.
But not live?
Correct.
Okay, all right, so here's a problem. First of all, may I be heard here? We've got a state law that this is violating. You're supposed to be telling people if it's recorded or not recorded, otherwise it's wiretapping and it's illegal. So it shouldn't be a big secret if we're copying something.
I, I was under the impression we were being broadcast over.
There's no big secret here. I'm trying to help the employees in this work environment so that people can speak that don't want to speak. That's what I'm trying to do.
We should, we should have been, clearly it should, we made it say it should have been announced, I was not aware of it. All right, done. Anything else? George? You've been here all, all, most of any of us, and you, it's the first time you speak, go ahead.
I think, I think you're really missing the point here. If you've got a problem in here, sometimes you cut it in half, all right? There's antagonism and a few other things. As a result, you have one of your employees leaving, and is leaving, and nobody knows or cares. Someone should take the time and ask her, why is she leaving so early? Would she stay another three or four years? From what I understand, she would, but things haven't been, no.
That's not my sole reason in leaving, I think you should have come and talked to me first before you broadcast.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But, no, I come here, I go once in a while, I run across it. People complain, and I mean, you're, you know, often have to talk to people, you know, want to find out what's going on. And, and, you know, I include the chief, I don't, what's he doing? What's going on? Far as I'm concerned, this place should run smoothly. There shouldn't be any antagonism, and this place should run like a ship. Or call them if you want. People should get along without bickering, without any infighting, period. That's my attitude about it. Is it because there's nobody in charge? I don't know. But somebody should lay the law down, that this is the way it should be, period. Now, just, just my opinion, but that's just what I've seen, and I'm gonna leave it at that.
Thanks, George.
I promised myself I wouldn't say anything, but I think there's a real problem of disorganization. For example, we walked in this meeting, and I didn't know quite what the, expect or what the format was. The select board arrives, you don't know your format, you haven't decided how you're gonna conduct this meeting. Most of you haven't read the letters. And I'm wondering, I'm sitting here saying, why am I here? You don't understand the difference between policies and procedures. I, I just think you've got to get some strong administrative help in here who will make things very clear to you, who will organize things, get the bills done in a, you know, distributed in a timely fashion, get the word out. I think that's, it's professional organization you need.
All right, thank you. Chief?
Well, I'd like to comment on the last two things I would say. And that's exactly my observation. There is this right now, very, very hostile situation here with a lot of employees, there's a lot of dead blood. Quite frankly, I haven't seen anything talked about tonight that's gonna fix any of that. This has been my experience here, as the board's aware, I brought a complaint forward in August of 2012. That really never was followed through or addressed. We talked about some solutions. I had brought forth something to try to resolve some of those issues, but there's never been any follow-through. And I'm sorry if I offend some of the board members, but quite frankly, there's been a real lack of leadership by the board. Someone needs to take control and lay the law down as to what things are gonna be handled here. And when there's a complaint, it needs to be followed all the way through. A lot of this stuff has just been initiated, started, and then, I guess the feeling was that you hope it's gonna go away. There was, there's been a number of conversations I've had with different board members over the past couple of years, whereby there seems to be this thought that the new town administrator's gonna fix everything here. It doesn't matter who the town administrator is, or who comes in here, it aligns with the board of selectmen. All of the select board members. The board has set some standards, as I understand from the last interviews, when you looked at the finalists, and made it clear to that person that they have no authority or any department head. And therein lies the problem. None of this is gonna get resolved until someone is actually in control and takes control and puts a stop to everything that's going on here. Everybody certainly needs to move forward and try to work together the best they can, but it's not happening.
All right, just go back to the department heads. One of the problems is that, you know, the clerk and the tax collector are both elected positions. So you bring a town administrator, and he has no say, or she has no say over those positions, and that's a difficulty. So some of the structure, the need structure of the town hall is what it is. And back in 2006, we tried to change that. And that didn't fly in the annual, they didn't want to lose their right to vote for the clerk or the right to vote for the tax collector. So, I mean, there was some efforts in the past, working with, you know, the state to change that. I agree, there's lack of leadership. And that's one of the reasons I'm not chair. I don't, with my schedule the way it is, I can respond to fires, but I can't stand up and leave because I don't have the time to do that this time. And I apologize for that. I did invest time trying to help Vicki and you work out different issues. And I thought we came to some solution for that. I thought we were moving forward with that. But to be chairman, I don't have the time to be chairman, and I apologize, I am sorry.
I'm gonna make one small comment here. I thank you for your trying to intervene, but I don't think there was a solution to that problem. So, I, I don't think it was, it didn't look very good. I thank you for, I said, I thank you for trying to come to me and maybe talking to him, but I think the fact that, you know, in my opinion, the board decided that yelling at someone is okay, and that's what I took away from there. So I don't think that, I don't think that that's what was, I don't think that was a good solution to that problem.
But that wasn't what, what the board felt. I'm, I'm sorry, I have to disagree with that. And even I say that I spoke to him that that was not accepted behavior, okay?
Like I said, I thank you for trying to do.
But I'm just asking, is that behavior recurred?
Hasn't spoken to me at all.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the board. How do you wish to proceed from here? Another meeting, and, or how do you wish to proceed? We have to deal with, is it C I C room?
Yes, community innovation, great.
I just want to know, what, what do you think we can do to better the communication? What, I mean, I, I'm really not feeling good that Ruth's gonna go back and somebody's gonna ask for tomorrow, how did it go? Because in my eyes, that doesn't make this very successful. And, so I would like to know, what could we talk about? What could we start to think about to make this seem like we're, we're getting somewhere, like we're moving forward?
I think the first thing you need to do is hire a good, strong, professional town administrator who can, or who can work with all the departments and have regular department meetings. There is an opportunity for communication. And who will act as a liaison between the staff and you. You shouldn't be involved in personnel matters, it really should be the town administrator. And there obviously should be a policy for employees who have a problem, for the steps they can take. I'm surprised that there isn't one. But I really feel strongly you've got to get a good, strong, professional, educated administrator in here as soon as possible.
I think in the meantime, maybe, you know, the board members can come to, and it doesn't have to be tomorrow per se, but come to my office, say, hey, how's it going? You know, what can I help you with? What do you need? What are the issues you have with certain people? Go to Donna's office, go to Ruth and Eileen, you know, go to the board of health. That way, it, it makes it like you care about what our office is doing and what our role is. And we can explain to you, what do we do, what's our role as a whole in this town that, you know, to try and make it work together.
Can I make comment? Just to follow up on what the chief said, I think he came up with a critical point there. When the candidates were before you last time, I think paraphrased him, he said, you made it clear that this person basically is, you know, adequate to call the select board, my words. But it's your right to tell a town administrator, this is what I want you to do. It's your right to tell every department head, this is what I want you to do, you will work with this person. And the two elected officials, Eileen and Donna, are great people, they're gonna work with the people. It's like the chief was saying, you give this person the, the place that he needs to be and all the responsibilities and the rights, and this person will get the job done. But if you say, I don't want you to do anything, I just want you to come and tell me what's going on. So it's up to you folks, I think.
Oh, no, not your hand, George.
As a mentor.
I think everybody should stop badmouthing everybody in here. It's so much easier to be nice than it is to be mean to people. Start acting courageous and stop badmouthing people. I don't care who it is, we hear it all day long, and the she's a good, he's a bad, she's a... We don't need that in here. We gotta stop it, and stop it now. We're not in, we're not in high school competing, we have to stop the badmouthing.
And I, and I have to just relate my own personal experience, because we've had some problems. I've been on chairman and I'm on over the years. And recently, we have, I don't say recently, within this last six months of here, we had a problem. I sat down with certain department heads, and I said, as of now, when someone in our office, the select board office asks for something, you're assuming it was us asking for it. And that didn't motivate any more concern or consideration from that department than before I asked for it. And made the statement that when, when we ask for something, it's to be, the assumption is that this board is asking for it, and you're to comply with that request. It hadn't, it didn't need any better cooperation or anything else than we've had.
But did you bring that person before you and said, hey? I mean, you've got to follow up on it.
We sat down with that person, I didn't know we did bring them in front of everybody, but, you know, it's just.
Disciplinary action that the board has to go through. I mean, if they just throw it in your face, I mean.
Just, you know, it's been more than once, so you're, you're right, we should bring it forward.
Well, John brings up, I mean, ultimately, you know, if, if, if people feel as, I mean, saying that you can badmouth people, intentionally needle people, try to get reaction out of people, and you can do that with knowing that you're not gonna be held accountable, there's a problem. You know, if someone's intentionally going around needling somebody to get a reaction out of them, or, you know, screwing up procedures intentionally to get someone upset, that person needs to go, period. They need to be fired. But, you know, that's a, you know, I don't know what Mike, you are in that discussion with people and asking them to.
I didn't ask, I said, I told.
Well, I'm just saying, I don't know what the steps are. Maybe you're gonna tell them once verbally, you're gonna send them a letter next, and, and that's the problem with this being a part-time board. I mean, is that ultimately, can we actually go up into somebody, a town employee, and say, you're fired? You're out of here.
There are certain disciplinary steps that wouldn't even be followed.
I wouldn't even know where to begin with that, because I don't know.
You should have a policy, you should, it should be laid out.
I've never had, I've never had to do it before. I mean, a lot of the stuff we do up here is like, it's slowly sort of, you do it as you go through, you know.
Well, if you had an experienced, professional town administrator, they would rewrite all those policies and make sure they're in place. That is the responsibility of a manager.
You know, but some of the behaviors I hear about that, be like, that person should be fired. That person, you know, I'm a partner with my company, and that person went to my company, they'd be gone.
All right, we gotta, we gotta bring this down. And Amy, did you have anything to?
Yeah, I just want to say, when the meeting first started, we all talked about that we're here for communication. And Liz brought up that we have to move forward, we can't look back, which is true. However, the main problem here is the negativity in this town hall. It's, George related to it already. You can't move forward unless the negativity is addressed. I don't know the solution. If there's personality conflicts, it's just not a very good workplace, it just isn't. I don't know the solution, should these people all get in a room together, hash things out, try and come to some kind of conclusion that way? I don't know what's the negativity in my personal impression, because just the negativity is.
There's a lack of cooperation, and as, as I said, a lack of development in here. All right, and I don't want to cut this off prematurely, but we have another issue that we have to deal with. Does anybody have anything new to add?
What we're gonna do with all these suggestions and thoughts.
I was trying to bring around that.
George has the other one.
George, one more time.
As a show, not to overuse a phrase, but the buck stops with the board, period. Lay the law down, and that's it, right? Well, it may sound harsh, but that's, no, that's the way, that's what you're there for.
It's a little bit more difficult with municipal employees, but it'd be easier if it was my office, I could go into my own morning and do things, but you can't do things here that you could do there. Bringing it back, just to summarize, if I maybe know some, what I thought are the issues. We have the website problem, how to make changes and to maintain it. We need to talk about that. For the board of health, that's one issue, and other departments, the food permitting, for liquor permits. We need to get them on the list before we, we sign off on an alcohol permit or any kind of permitting. PQB, we need to import, from my reading, the rules need to be applied to be fairly evenly. We need to find out part-time employees, and my own suggestion was town attorney to clarify how those people that aren't being treated are, are receiving an extra benefit for the eighteen hours to be handled, I suppose that or not. The accounting office is financial information, the mailboxes, which brought up Japanese policy, whatever that was called.
Policy.
Station of policies, change of policies. Consider that, send that out to town employees. The finance committee was looking for backup documentation to the email correction. Ruth was looking for someone to be the contact person, and I guess I'll raise my hand for that for now for the next five or six months since I'm chairman. I always thought everybody had my cell phone, but perhaps they don't. Anybody else, did I miss anything? And it's communications and negativity, but I don't know how you list those and make sure about those, right?
Bridget, one more. Is the server, deleting emails off the server?
Oh, deleting emails off the servers.
I would like to say, if a person writes a complaint, a written complaint, we have to address it, right? I mean, is that a way for an employee to communicate with us? So that we have it written, then we can address it, rather than just hearsay and everybody talking?
And I, strike me, or strike me, correct me if I'm wrong, the Personnel Policy Manual refers sexual harassment, I believe, has a policy that they can contact any select person or any select persons, and they're supposed to be being actioned by our, on our part to correct that or to handle that. But I don't know whether that policy about who they contact extends to other individuals. I think sexual harassment is pulled, is what I would.
There's a grievance section in the personnel.
Grievance section, but again, the problem with the grievance section is that we have.
She's a management.
Right, that's for the worker, not the worker. So anyway, anybody, did I miss anything?
No, town employees and.
Oh, no, well, that would be something we'd have to blow down and go through the whole process.
So I think, do you want to draft up a, an article for the annual? Or that?
And I got a question, I mean, can we in fact disenfranchise a citizen? I don't know. You may not. You may not be able to disenfranchise a resident from an elected position.
Do you have to say it's a right?
I think. Yeah, I think that's how it comes out.
Can I make a final comment on the, the thread about, and there's three different words, negativity, animosity, and hostility? And I guess the suggestion I would have for the board is that you all designate a person, and it doesn't have to be a board of selectmen member, it can be any of your designees to investigate the, the scope of these concerns. And I do agree and concur with the lady in the back, is it Anna? That you, you need to know what the problem is before you can fix it. And it, it's a common thread for multiple people. And it's a common thread for multiple people in here that this exists, and I think it needs to, we need to figure out how. And with all due respect, I don't think the Board of Selectmen is going to figure it out unless there's a person in charge of figuring that out.
The four of the three words I had.
Animosity, hostility, and negativity.
Okay. And the board, next meeting, what board put this on the agenda that I can begin?
Can I just say that although some people are, you may leave here thinking that this was not as helpful as we wanted it to be, I'm leaving here feeling like it was a positive experience. One, because I'm new to this, and so getting your expectations from and about and from the Select Board is really helpful for me. And two, because I think that there's enough people, although not as many as I had hoped, in the room that are going to kind of think about it and maybe pass the word to a friend that, you know, it's an open forum, and that we want, we want things to get better. I'm sure, I don't want to go to work in a negative work environment, and I'm sure that you don't want to either. So I'm leaving feeling positive that we're going, you know, we're going to pull this together and that the environment here is going to improve.
And, by your... Mr. Floyd, I am Mr. Floyd, I'm just going to give the board a chance.
I don't know what the answer is.
Thank you, Robert Floyd, 15 East Street. In my management corporate experience, we saw that whoever had an issue generally involves an ego, somebody was hurt, misconception, and unless that historic concept is brought up and discussed, it's going to fester, and it's going to turn to black and white, and there's not going to be a lot of gray areas. So whoever made the suggestion about a liaison, of going around talking to people, something just being heard, not that it would take a group to solve that particular person's problem, but just listening, just someone that can hear everyone's stories.
All right? Anything else? I'm going to ask that, and then we move on to the grant. Paul, go ahead.
I can't just keep talking, I can't just stop and...
I didn't, I didn't, you didn't send anything out, and I thought it was the end of it.
I couldn't.
I can just keep talking, I can't just stop and...
I didn't plug my phone right there.
What are you going to do, do your karma in?
Let's not tell anybody. I don't need your titles. I just do.
That's right. You're going to six K.
Six, oh my God. If she had six K, she wouldn't be so beautiful. That's not true. Six K, I'd do it, three. All I can take. I think it's funny when two-year-olds say, "We know, like you know, we know, like you," and then they go like this. No, man.
What are your kids' names?
Evan and...
Evan and...
What? Oh, no, really? Okay.
I got it. I was going to say, you mentioned my existence.
I said, let's see, so we can see if they got...
I've been sleeping on the floor.
Really?
My nerves are so bad.
Well, this is my...
What's that? It just puts the weight...
Do you mind sitting down there?
No, I don't really want to.
That's yours.
That's yours. No, Anne and Jackie were down here, and they wanted to... This is why, this is why I got for her birthday.
Jackie? Oh, she's there. All right. We've been asked by the school department to help with this Community Innovation Challenge Grant, to endorse it, and to help with some ideas. Chief, I think one of your members working on something for the school. Reggie brought up the issue, I think, was it you, Reggie, about the generator for the school?
Yeah.
Did we, I think I called you, did we have a generator for the school?
No.
The school does not have, it needs to be wired, and how much is this grant? I remember they told me, the generator for the school, I guess, could about $100,000, I haven't even seen it.
Oh, there you go.
Reggie, did you get a few, what they want us to do with this?
I don't want to curse. You know what, when he brought it, you know, there's second, you're like, "It's not..."
It doesn't have any wire, I don't think, but I think that all of them stand on power line, and it's just plugged in. It doesn't have a generator for the school.
I don't think it's just for a generator.
It's just for a generator, it's a lot of wiring, it has to be done, and...
No, I know, but what's the grant for?
What's the grant cover, though?
Prozes, multi-year competitive grant, regionalizations, internal efficiencies. Applicants include municipalities, regional schools, school districts, regional planning. Make a request for awards up to $500,000, we consider this amount of matching grant program, applicants will be required to submit detailed budget project timeline.
So what does the generator come up like? Is that what they want to do?
No, no, Reggie came up with that.
That would be a great idea, because we lost all that fluid in the power outage.
Yeah, but I mean, how is this going to be a certification? We fight for the school to go back to shelter, which I'm one of the content of your grant days.
There's a lot involved in being, we had, they had talked about that at the school committee meeting.
It's a lot of money.
Last month.
Correct here, if you're selection, innovative, potential for greatest impact, body of evidence, you have a flat roof, demonstrated, usually...
I don't know, I wish you said...
What do you want? No, no, I think they have a flat roof over there, so it couldn't be a snow shell, a snow shell, a shelter, winter storm.
If the snow load was modified, would you give us such a...
So there's some, there's some...
There was some snow load capacity that was upgraded, I don't know, we did it over 20 years ago.
Okay. So they could be one now, if they...
For what?
To be a warming shelter, or whatever they...
Well, right now, if we have power, yes. If we want to open the generator, it could, because the facility is not set to take that DC power.
Now, this place is, though.
This is one of my...
Alright, the district is submitting a community innovative challenge grant for, to introduce a new Select Card access to Hampton Regional, installation of telephone upgrades at West Hampton, Williamsburg, Southampton, and St. Louis. Purchase installation of video monitors for sharing daily announcements, improved upgrades of software for management of student health, new walk-in talkies for use in school emergencies. Now, that's what their, that's an over the annual reading. Chief, you were, I mean, one more second, and I'll be ready for, because you had something on this, right? One of your men was going to do something. Yeah, we're working on it now. Oh, here. And then, from our local police department, this is Reggie. Oh, is this to you or from you? When talking to Officer Bo about the CIC brand or equipment that the Southampton PD might want to conclude, he mentioned a computer upgrade, new computer for the PD to manage school safety information. And the connection, of the connection of the Norris surveillance cameras to the police department, so that they can be monitored from the police station. It's got a pocket, Chief's over there, and I actually confirmed ideas because it are others. No, nothing further.
Would the video cameras have sound?
I don't know what the capacity of the school is, but we're looking to be able to, you know, have a link to the school cameras, so if there's an event there, we can, you know, monitor all the hallways, see what's going on, and just have the...
My only suggestion to you would include the sound of the video, audio of the video, because then you could actually hear what's going on outside the school through the...
An alternative that I saw last week in Connecticut, that's in one of their schools, they're down there, is they're not putting panic buttons in every classroom and all the public spaces of the building, so that a teacher can just...
But you don't know what the nature of the panic is, and sometimes it's not a thing, you know?
Well, it's to call attention, I mean, if it's combined with cameras, then they would catch someone's attention right away.
Not to get to the straight point, but...
In every classroom?
Every classroom, public area.
But if you had audio, you'd know what the panic's for, to get straight to the point.
Well, I'm just saying, it's an alternative, which is more expensive, I have to help with whether a panic. They were doing it in response to Newtown. They were using, one school was equipped with panic buttons in every classroom and every public space.
But it was not a monitor, it was attached, it was like a monitor of the kids, of the school, because, you know, and one of the things that Dave, I'm taking words out of his mouth, was response time to the school.
Yeah.
And that's why we're putting gear in officers' cars and stuff, because if you were seeing something and are hearing something, even before they hit a panic button.
But how would they, how would they do that if you, let's say there's 20 classrooms in there, would you have 20 monitors, or you're going to have one monitor? Well, what we had discussed about was having, you know, a large monitor that breaks into different cells, so that we could, you know, at any given time say, "Look at 10 different cameras at once," or zoom in on a camera, or change to different cameras, you know? Obviously, the main advantage is if there's something terrible happening there, you know, typically, the office not going to know what's going on and have details until we get there, then we got to talk to somebody, find out, or go to the school to find out what's going on. And that just makes, gives a little bit of a better advantage to be better prepared for exactly what's going on if we had access to the surveillance system. But I mean, there's got to be 20 or 40, 40 or 50 rooms up there. Obviously, you wouldn't be able to have them all covered up at once.
No, but the advantage is that a lot of the rooms connect. So if you got one into one room, it's connected to another anyhow, do you know what I mean? So you wouldn't have to have one in every single room.
For cameras.
Cameras.
Right.
If there's a wall between, just a door, you can't really, kind of have a camera on both sides of the wall.
Maybe it could rotate, in the doorway.
That's good, that's about, is there one in the cafeteria?
There's no cameras in the cafeteria, but a panic button would be really great, because our safe place, like, nobody's going to know we're in there. But I was thinking, I wonder if there's anything that we could do to make that cafeteria a safer place in the event of a lockdown? You know, like, my biggest concern when we're in there and we practice is to put 160 kids on a stage behind a curtain. And I'm thinking, if somebody's going to come to a school and they're going to cafeteria, the first thing they're going to do is target behind the curtain, and so...
Maybe we don't like this.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of this shouldn't be discussed.
Yeah.
At least the entrances and exits of the school should be that, with video monitoring and a main car and stuff.
One of the issues that I think is going to come in the future is that, you know, most often the shooters, school shooters, come from that school, it was that school. So at some point in time, the shooters of the future are going to know the procedures that were followed.
That's so sad.
That's a hell of a statement, Dan.
All right. Hampton Regional is looking for us to confirm our interest, train, confirm your interest, training consultation supports needs that would be funded by the grant, equipment and materials to be purchased by the grant, item, vendor, price, quantity, information, rationale for the request for two and three, how much for the equipment, how much for the training, how these items would increase supports to the town, mutual aid, emergency response, other operations. If you are interested in working, please let us know, and we'll get together. So I guess, are we interested in having them chase this grant? Absolutely. All right, so I'll take a motion to that. Their second?
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Now, the question becomes, what ideas do you wish to submit to them? I mean, obviously... One of the other things that we talked about was if there's going to be money available in the grant for training. It is. You know, I mean, police training, where we do, you know, in lockdown, we've done a couple of trains into school on a weekend when nobody's been in there, we've done some tactical training in there, we've done some simunitions training in there, where you're actually sort of like a professional level paintball, we've done that already, but, you know, we're absorbing those costs. Maybe things like that can be enrolled into that in the future. One of the other things that I had talked to Super Ten about in the past was that we really should have a training that encompasses Southampton, Southampton, East Hampton, and all the communities that may have to respond to the regional. While we have lockdown at the regional, there hasn't been any practical, tactical training at the regional. Well, and that's one of the, I can't find it right now, but regionalization and regionals.
Who's first responded, is it West Hampton?
West Hampton, if they're on duty, then it would be the state police, and, you know, and we have responded to West Hampton before at their request. So it's likely going to be one of the surrounding communities, Southampton, East Hampton, North Hampton, they will, probably everybody will be going, and I know that all of those, all of our communities, Southampton, East Hampton, have participated some of the lockdowns at the regional, so should something happen there, it's going to be quite a varied response from different agencies. Yeah, and maybe I read this wrong, but the applicants include municipalities, regional school districts, school districts, forming a regional school district, regionalization services.
Could you get a generator for Norris, or is that not following to this?
Yeah, we talked about that.
For safety? If there's a power outage, or...
Innovative potential for greatest impact, cost savings, annual benefits such as enhanced service enhancement, service delivery efficiency, or other benefits, I'm assuming, public benefits, public safety, other services, or other benefits.
Is it a security grant?
I don't follow the detail about it, they are just...
This is the second year.
Second year, they get some money.
Should we get any money last time?
Yes, we have.
We got any?
Why not a new website? New website.
But this is...
I know, but I think it's also not only for schools, but it's also for towns, municipalities.
All right, well, what, so we're going to express our interest in it, we both took the vote, we're going to express our interest.
So if we're just talking with Chief, so, I would, not to get specific, but I would see what would be available for grant funds, or, you know, increasing security in and around the schools, the elementary and the regional.
Possible police training to increase...
Yeah, I mean, they just say there's a broad spectrum, whether it's video surveillance, training, equipments, panic buttons, or something like that.
So do we want to go down, are we in favor of looking into a generator for that building?
Well, it would be a generator, but it would also be the infrastructure, would the generator...
Right, yeah.
I'll be like, I mean, wouldn't you just find a generator or something?
Generator.
So there's the generator, there's the cameras, there's connect, computer systems connect, that would...
Connected.
Training. So, anything else, so we can send a letter to document everything, ready with those issues? Okay, anything else? But you could say that, you know, anything that will enhance the safety and security of the school.
Right. What about, what about things like satellites, like Pomeroy and Tam and the crosswires, the kids are all over there.
Oh, what a great idea.
Or a sidewalk, a real sidewalk, or anything.
That light would be really...
Nothing sure happens to fire in transportation at all, like...
Dark side.
Well, we don't, we send that over to Park, like, I'm going to write this email this to him.
I think I told him that the chairman wasn't sure if he did it.
Is there anything, fire ways that we should be looking at?
Well, we should have had is an introduction to have all the department heads meet to the park, chief.
Did he start tonight?
He started.
Oh, good.
I didn't think of that until I was all the way in Springfield this morning.
So can we put that on the next, the next meeting agenda, they have, you know...
Ask them to come over and...
Ask them to come over and maybe have, you know, if anyone wants to be in the town or anything, or be here.
Were you able to meet him? I wasn't sure if today was the start, or if not. I was on the name while I was at the office.
Have you met him, Dan?
I spoke to him on the phone.
Okay.
Anything else that we want to put in for this grant, anything that comes to mind right now? I don't think today's the drop dead last day we can come up with ideas, but... Yeah, we're still working on some ideas, I've been talking with, you know, all the officers involved with that.